Larry Church.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Bill Wantland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
John Kramer, DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the medical authority? Under current business, we have consideration and possible action to approve renewal of the lease agreement with Seminole HMA LLC, DBA Integris Seminole Medical Center located at 2401 West Drangler Boulevard, effective October 1, 2017, at a lease rate of $15,000 annually.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we're going to come back with you probably with an actual new lease agreement, just memorialize this later on before probably the first of October.
Thank you. There being no further business for the medical authority, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, so ordered. That brings us to the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer, Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Wantland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes. Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? That brings us into approvals and acceptances. Resolution number one, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number SUA 2017-01, a resolution transferring operating funds of $10,000 from the Utilities Authority to the Airport Authority for fiscal year 2016-17, to be designated and appropriated as an additional budget funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Bids, number two, consideration and possible action to approve soliciting sealed bids for the refurbishment of the South Final Clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Current business, number three, consideration and possible action to begin billing Hidden Lakes Trailer Park, which is not within Seminole City limits, directly to the park's owner based on the monthly master meter reading and to discontinue billing individual trailer residents who reside in the park since they're not directly connected to the city's metering system.
Good question, Vice Mayor. I really, could you explain that, Mr. Saxon? I really don't understand that.
Sure.
Thank you.
For many years, and I guess this goes back to when Don Stewart owned the trailer park, he paid, I guess paid, to run the water all the way out to the trailer park. And since then, we've had apartment units, you know, other things developed within the city that the, we don't actually have the meters to them. We have master meters, we bill them, and then they are responsible for collecting water or adding that on to a lot rental or apartment rental. That's, that's pretty customary across the board. Somehow, back in, long ago, this deal was set up where we would actually, they have meters out there that are not owned by the city, and because it's not in city's jurisdiction, we really don't have the ability to go out there legally and shut them off. So, we're kind of left in a catch here. What we're recommending is that we do, like we do on many of our other sites, is that we have one master meter, and the water that flows through that master meter will be our bill, and then the owner of the trailer park will pay that bill. And then he, or she, is responsible for making sure that the water usage that's going through that other, individual meters is accounted for and paid for.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Are they also picking up the garbage out there?
Uh, man, I, I think that we've still got the WCA going out there. But, they're not like polycarts, I don't think. I think.
No, it's just one dumpster, one big dumpster.
Yeah.
So, the trailer park's paying for that then, direct to them?
I move to approve.
I second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, discussion regarding current trash solid waste services provided by the city to include discussion of options for soliciting a third-party provider via request for proposals.
Were you just doing this to check out the competition?
Well, we've got issues. You, many of you, I'm sure, have been called at home about trash service and, I know Mike and I are getting a lot of complaints, and for whatever reason, they have not been able to keep help, and their equipment is continually breaking down. And I think we're, we're way past the point where it's time for us to start looking for other options. That's not to say that there won't be a winning bidder coming back in front of you, but I'd sure want to, sure would want to tighten up some restrictions on what we can expect from them. For the most part, they're fairly responsive on the complaints. But, man, just the level of service, whether it's churches being missed for several weeks, or even individual businesses and individuals are, are just having a real rough time with our current situation. So, we're asking that you allow us to go out and investigate what else is out there. Mike and I have taken the liberty of meeting with at least one provider that is interested in our area, and I think they're going to be very competitive and maybe offer some services that we don't have now. I'm not going to say recycling yet, but there are other services that we may be able to enjoy at, at an affordable price.
Would a new operator be able to dump at the same place?
Each of them have different plans. The one that we talked to, I think, had a plan for preg. But, every, every operator is going to do something different with the dump. Sean E. actually has a transfer station, so they don't even have a, a real dump there for local service. I guess they have to go to preg as well to, to do bulk loads the, in a pickup, so.
They, they bring their bulk loads to the transfer station.
Okay.
That's probably what we would end up with if they decide to do something different. We'd end up with a transfer station just for the citizens to use.
But that's, that's only if we're requiring it in the contract. If, they may, maybe end up cheaper just hauling it to preg. We don't know that yet. We'll do that in the RFP.
Explain a transfer station, exactly.
It's, it, it is a building, a facility. It's, it's large, probably in the 30,000 square foot range. They actually bring trash there, unload, and then haul it later after it's compacted, and, and sometimes they even recycle at those, at those centers, so. It's, it's hauled in a much more cost-effective way to a larger dump, rather than just spending, you can, it's similar in ways to ambulances. If you spend all your mileage running back and forth to the landfills, then you, you put so many miles on those buses that it's, it's difficult to make it cash flow. So, what they do is they build these transfer stations and haul them with much larger loads after they're compacted.
We, we are working currently, but we're not under contract with WCA. We would like to go ahead, while we're in this process, extend their contract for three months. They've shown interest in that, so we could go ahead and get our ducks in the rove.
You said no recycling yet. Was that something that we can look forward to, or? Or the later contract or something?
If I said no recycling yet, I misspoke. What I meant to say was, I'm not going to say recycling yet, but there are other services available. That's something that we can put in the RFP to investigate, kind of.
So, it's something they may offer or may not?
Right. That, that would be more or less an add alternate in a bid-type form. So, we can ask, how much is this going to cost? If you want to do, I forget, Mike, they had, what is, they, is it a one-yard box, or? They had a term for it.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
I can't remember, but the good part that I liked was that I've read several different companies provide it. Kim has a 90 gallon trash dumpster, which you have now. When you choose to recycle, your trash dumpster would actually be a smaller size, so your cost would go down. And then, you could pick it up, the cost would be incurred on the, on the recycle.
Do they provide you something that they pick up that's recycled, a different truck comes and gets a different container that's got glass or cans? That's the way it is. My sister's in Arkansas.
Yeah.
But it costs a little bit more, the, the city, to do that. I don't know.
Yeah, but if you choose to go to a smaller dumpster, that'll offset that piece.
They have a separate dumpster for grass? That's what fills mine up.
Motion to approve.
Wait, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm not certain. Let me ask my city attorney here. I'm not certain that I put action on that agenda item. Uh, I may have to come back to you for that, for the extension of the contract. I just totally missed that. I'm sorry.
Draw my motion then.
Yeah, we're on a month-to-month, so, but it, we're going to be more comfortable if we can extend that for three months. We don't want them to just decide not to pick up this week, so. The sooner we can do that, the better. I just did not get it on the agenda. I'm sorry.
Well, you have before you then the discussion, discussion of the request for proposal.
Yes. That's, right now, all I need is, if you're going to do a motion, I'd like to have a motion for have to go ahead with RFPs to, to entertain solid waste trash services.
Can we do that the way that's ordered?
Yes.
I don't think we could do that with, doesn't it have to say possible action on the agenda? For us to make an action?
I don't know. I think that probably meets the disclosures of RFP.
Typically, we put action on there, but I think you can probably direct the staff to go ahead and prepare the, start preparing the RFPs, and we can come back and, and work that.
Yeah, you're not incurring cost.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with, with, I think the best way to handle it's probably just direct the staff to prepare the RFPs, and let's just take it back and vote on it when we come back, or. Because I, I do feel a little uncomfortable not putting, voting on it without action.
Is there a motion then to prepare the requ, request for proposal?
I think the best way to handle that's just to table, just to table it, and, and, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you'll just direct the staff to put that on the next agenda and, and prepare the, begin preparing the RFPs for, for your consideration.
So, the motion is tabled.
I move.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
This is for table, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion to table passes.
Number five, consideration and possible action to approve the agreement to provide water service with Parks Manufacturing.
Yeah, you need, I read that, but I need it explained.
Okay. I can go.
It's not simple.
It is complicated, doesn't begin to describe what we're into with the Parks Manufacturing. Probably know it better as Blue Wave Boats. Roger and Pam have decided to retire, and they are selling a portion of the business to a, a good group of guys. I've, I've had a couple of meetings with them, and they're, they're good people. And they have gone through a process called New Markets Tax Credits. And they are getting a, a federal tax credit to help expand that business bigger than it is now. That's the really good news. The bad news is that through this process with various banks, the tax credits, the federal government, the city, and the Parkses, and all the investors that are involved on the other side of that, there are, and I'm not exaggerating, 18 lawyers. When you get 18 lawyers together, pardon me, Brad.
I'm working on making it 19.
So, every syllable of every word is dissected, and everybody gets a billable hour for that. The issue, I mean, I can't tell you how many hurdles we've cleared, but the final hurdle is this. Because of the fact that Independent Tank was once on that site, there are environmental concerns. And in order for them to be comfortable, they already know they're not going to be allowed to drill their own water wells. So, they want some assurance that the city government will supply water to Blue Wave Boats. I emailed them back. I said, "This is a little bit," and this is exactly what I said, "This is, this is ridiculous." The city of Seminole actually has an ordinance, and I've attached this ordinance that shows we actually require businesses to be on city water if they're within the city limits. Well, that prompted another four hours of good billable service, and they sent me back a much more complicated version of, and this is what you've got in front of you tonight. I decided, you know what, it's not worth me commenting back. They just want us to assure them that we are going to be providing service to Blue Wave Boats in the future. I don't see a problem with that. We're already requiring them to be on our city water service, so I think we're safe.
Yeah, but it was all of the amounts we have to do. What if we ever for some reason fall under that, well, water main break, or whatever? I mean, what are the, I mean, can they come back at us for this?
No. I was satisfied, I think Brad would agree, that the force majeure section of that contract allows for just about anything that we can think of that would ever happen, that would cause us to be able to fall under that. Now, let me, let me make sure everybody's clear. They're talking about 69,000 gallons of water a month. When we had a washing facility on the north side of town, we were doing about 1.2 million gallons a month. It was substantially more water. So, our water system and our sewer system were built for a community, I'm going to say in the neighborhood of 34,000, 36,000 people, and right now, we're only serving 8,000. So, we've got plenty of water. We've got plenty of sewer capacity. This is not an issue.
Couldn't they just form two baseball teams? There's 18 of them.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they could. They could have a great softball game.
Well, I can say this, being a lawyer. Do you know what 100,000 lawyers buried up to their neck in sand is a sign of?
What's that?
A sand shortage.
I thought you were going to say good start.
Okay.
Is there a motion then?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business before this body, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, that brings us to the City Council meeting. We call that to order. Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Bill Wantland.
Here.
John Kramer, Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Please stand for the, the prayer, the pledge of allegiance and the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, I get a message and miss God, hang a gigotai. But we can stop getting quitche de bado, moment, but the law for Seminole, moment, post, the, and, among them. It is no get you, kids, moment, Jim, yes, I get a message on against cars. God, whose mercies cannot be numbered, accept our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another, for you, God, our love. Amen.
Amen.
Consideration and action of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration and possible action to approve the mayoral reappointments of Mark Shell and Chuck Chatick to the Planning Commission for additional three-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
We need to do those individually?
We do have to do them individually, too.
Okay. Motion to approve Mark Shell.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve Chuck Chatick.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration and possible action to approve the mayoral reappointment of Richard Parks to the Seminole Urban Renewal Authority for an additional three-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the City Council? Yes, ma'am.
I am concerned about what trees and weeds on the railroad track and what you're going to do about that. And is it, are, are supposed to shoot fireworks and sit there?
It's a perennial problem, and there ought to be a solution to it.
It is, and, and I acknowledge that it's, it's reached the point of being pathetic, but getting the railroad to move on anything is, is really, really difficult. Now, I will give Brad a lot of props on this. He's stayed hooked up, Sharon has as well. We've spent a, a good deal of time trying to rectify the situation, and we've gone into the, the point where we've, we've notified them that we're filing a complaint with the Federal Railroad Commission, or is it Authority? I can't remember. Commission. They're aware, actually, all their departments, what they like to do is pass this to a different department. And then that department takes three months or four months to get to the bottom of it, and then they pass this to a different department. And then we start all over, and they act like nobody knew anything about it. So, we're, we're giving them one more shot. The last email that Brad fired off was very direct and, and said, "Look, we're, we're through. We're not going to talk about it anymore. It needs to be done." And she's to the point that,
She's coming up here.
The lady is coming. So, the lady that's over all their maintenance is coming to Seminole to see it for herself. She, she's having a difficult time grasping what is actually happening. I don't think it was until we fired off a picture of the tree trunks that are inside of the rail that she really grasped that, oh, wow, this is a problem. So, those pictures finally reached the right eyes, and she's going to come down. But, irregardless, I think we're going to go ahead with our Federal Railroad Commission, which is the people that can bring them under rein. They've got a lot of latitude dating back into the 1800s of what they have to comply with, and we're doing our best, Brad especially.
For what it's worth here, I'll just tell you, the, I've called the, the gentleman and talked to him personally with the Federal Railroad Commission. He asked for the information. He wanted to see the pictures himself. I sent a bunch to him. He said he would get on the phone with the appropriate authority, and he has, and he asked for an opportunity to talk with the Union Pacific person that's in charge of, of the right-of-way maintenance, and to see if we can resolve it before they got involved too much, and we're, we're starting to get some responses now, because, you know, the next email I get was, "I need to copy your ordinance, and I'll be up there as soon as I possibly can." So, I imagine she's going to be on the ground pretty quick. And, you know, this is the person that's over all the railroad maintenance for like the southwest United States, for Union Pacific. So, they've definitely got their attention now, and the lady that, that is coming up here is the same lady that did send some contractors to work previously, but they didn't even make a dent in what we needed, so we know we're dealing with the right person now. Say again?
Does she know that we had to sue her earlier, before?
She's aware. She's aware.
She aware of the possibility that she could be arrested?
Well, I think they're more, I think they're more worried about the congressional complaints that we're going to, you know, that we made it clear that we're going to have to start getting our congressmen involved if they can't do anything, because like Steve says, it's just, you know, it's such a huge bureaucracy that, you know, that just falls on deaf ears. They've got so much to maintain. Here we are, Little Old Seminole, and we're not even on their, in fact is, you know, this stretch of railroad, from what I understand, is so small because I think other operators have other ends of it on each side of Seminole, so it's, it's like it's just in the very middle of other railroad responsi, other company responsibilities, so. We got their attention now. I imagine we'll start seeing something pretty quick. And then fireworks, it's illegal to pop fireworks in the city limits, and I've got a ton of citations that have hit my desk already, and they've already been signed, and in fact is, I think several have been filed.
What's the, what's the fine, Brad?
Up to, let's see, I think it's up to $500 on the first offense and court costs, and up to 30 days in the, in city jail. And up to 20 hours of community service.
What about other properties with tall weeds over in that area? I have some complaints from some of my constituents at the members of the church on Gale. They keep their area neat and mowed regularly. So, I just sent some folks over and paid to have some of those lots brush hogged and mowed. But, I understand that that's been an ongoing problem. Trying to get some sort of positive response from the people who own those properties was why I did that, rather than have them to wait all summer, you know, and have to deal with it.
Go ahead.
This has been the most aggressive approach to tall weeds and grass since I've been here. And
This year.
This, well, ever, I mean, as far as the number of citations that are written. On my desk right now are about 45 or 50, I think the last count. And I brought this to Steve today. These are just the people that call me just to These are just the people that call me just today. I've got about 15 messages, people that are cited. Trial dockets tomorrow morning at 8:30 and we're going to try about, now, looks like 12 or 14 of these things, of those that show. Number one complaint that I'm getting is so far is, "Well, I was cited, but the guy next to me, he wasn't cited."
I've heard that.
And his is taller than mine. It's like, well, you got to start somewhere. And that's the number one complaint. Well, my grass is tall, but the one, but everybody on my block is tall, so, you know, the chief's here.
I get those calls a lot, exactly what Brad's saying where my grass, you know, I got a ticket for this, but my neighbor doesn't. Well, when I check into it, yeah, the neighbor has. I'm not saying that's 100% of the time, but it's probably 75% of the time when they throw somebody else under the bus. He didn't get it, but I am. Well, yes, they did get it.
I hear that a lot. I mean, but that's just common.
He, I think Burnett has been, Burnett's been doing it and Zach Dennis has been out working, you know, on code enforcement. I think he did, I think he turned in like 45 this morning.
Yeah, it was a bunch.
This morning. He turned in like 45 of them to Pam Morgan this morning. We've been very aggressive. We're not giving warnings. We're writing tickets.
I've heard that and I appreciate it.
So we're, I mean, we're, here again, we write a ticket and two weeks later, they still haven't touched it, so we write another ticket. I mean, it's just some people, like I'm sure Brad can tell you, there's some people that are getting three and four or five tickets. They don't do it. And we, we're getting stuff around.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I was going to say this, the second complaint that I hear the most is, "Well, I didn't get a warning." And I'm like, "Well, are we, is the city supposed to give you a warning?" Every one of these citations have, at least the majority of them, I'm almost, I think since the police department's been doing them, there are pictures. They take a picture right there. I mean, it is, it's either 12 inches or more in height. And if it's not, it's brush or whatever, whatever. So there are photographs of every one of these. The lady came in real nice. She was, came in and said to me yesterday, she said, "Hey, well, the producer, I didn't know, we didn't know that they were doing this now." The producer, I never saw anything in the paper and they usually run something and it's not in the paper. And she had a 309, it's a $309 citation for tall weeds and grass. Now, there's some flexibility there as far as, I mean, if there's a good reason, you know, we're taking them, at least I am, case-by-case basis. And if you go to court and you're found guilty, you're going to get a $309 ticket or fine. That's what, and that includes costs. And that's what every one of these have been that I've prosecuted. That's what the judge has imposed. $309 is a lot for not mowing your lawn. So if there's a reason, you know, let us know and, you know, we can let the police department know and we'll put it down. But, I mean, just because I haven't gotten to it yet isn't a good excuse. And, I mean, there are lots of livid people, but unfortunately, they're not mowing their lawn. And they've, you know, we all get the brunt of it for, it's, you know, if we don't enforce it, everybody gripes. And if you get a ticket, well, they're griping because they got a ticket because no one told them they needed to mow their lawn. It's just, it's insane, but...
You know, if you read the producer, oh, I was going to say, if you read the producer, you'll see the fines in there.
A lot of them.
So you'll know what it is.
Right.
I got a call recently from somebody that was telling me that their grass wasn't that tall. They should have never wrote them a ticket. I went out there and looked and it came up to my belly button.
But at some point, does the city move to move in and go ahead and mow and then build them? And so, because I, I mean, you hear all these excuses. And I remember telling the highway patrolman that I had my cruise set at 70 miles an hour and he told me, he said, "Well, I didn't ask. Why do you have your cruise set up? I was going to tell you how fast you were going."
I can contest, Vice Mayor, that there was a lady in my area that called two or three times and she went about the system correct, contacted the chief. He sent Officer Burnett out there and it got done. The system does work. You know, sometimes it takes time for the wheels of justice to turn, but it is turning. And I think the word is getting out that they're starting to enforce it now and they're reading this stuff in the paper. You know, that one guy that I talked to, the next-door neighbor, he said, "Well, usually I get a $25 or $35 fine." You know, now, I don't know if he's telling the truth or not, but they're hearing these numbers now and it's starting to work. So the only thing I suggest is find out who owns this property, get the information to the chief and he'll take care of business. I've seen that for a fact.
I understand that that works.
And I'll bet you, I mean, if I had to, if I was the bet man, I'd bet that 50 to 75% of the calls we even get have already been cited in these ones.
One idea was given to me by Ernie Willis and it was a good idea. And we, when we get a full-time person on board, I think we'll probably try to implement it next mowing season. You've driven down the highway and seen the orange sticker that's stuck on the car meaning that, hey, this has already been looked at. You don't have to worry about this. On tall weeds and grass, it would be nice if we could get just some survey stakes or something, paint them pink, electric pink or whatever, and put them in the yard so that everybody that drives by knows they've had a ticket or they are under some sort of...
It's in process.
It's in process. We know that it's here. And so if you drive by and you see it and there's not a pink stick there, then that's the time to call in because we get a lot of calls on the same properties over and over and over and people assume that that has never been ticketed when in fact, man, this is the third go on the same piece of property.
Well, seems that Ernie still has some good ideas last year.
Well, let me say one other thing, too. A lot of these people are coming in and saying, "Well, okay, it's mowed now. Okay, I got it mowed now after I've been cited, you know, because it was three feet tall." Well, yeah, that does, you know, make a difference. I mean, I guess it does. And they, we take them on a case-by-case basis. But normally, I'm going to request that they enter a plea and they get a, you know, I might recommend a reduced fine, but I'll need that conviction because if they get another one, then the fine doubles. And so, you know, it's kind of like you get your free spin. You know, there's a couple, I mean, I've got to tell you, you know, I've had, I've dismissed and it was for good reason and I won't go into it. But, you know, when, there are some times, there are circumstances that, you know, require, you know, justice to be served, so... But, I mean, just getting your lawn mowed after the fact isn't going to work. So it needs to be done. And I explained to the lady yesterday that I understand you feel like you're picked on, but when you're getting twice as many complaints coming in about people not mowing their lawn, then you'll understand why the city and the department's taking such an aggressive approach on it. And, you know, other people have property values that they take seriously. They want to mow their lawn. They want to make sure their house looks nice. And when the neighbor doesn't, it doesn't reflect very well on their neighborhood. So, you know, they should do it just out of, you know, considering that as well. So, anyway, I'll stay off my high horse. I'm just giving you my closing argument that I've made 100 times to the court. But if you want to see some, you can come watch them in the morning.
Well, we appreciate your good judgment and your hard work on it. I mean, we trust your judgment, but there's exceptions to everything.
I was going to ask, what is the process when it's a BIA property or a tribally-owned property? Like, because I know that they're checkerboarded throughout the city with Seminole Nation Housing Authority and what is the process proposed?
I hadn't had, honestly, I haven't had any of those that I know of, or at least nobody's objected to it. I mean, the ordinance, I think, are, I mean, the chief...
If it's tribal-owned property, we have jurisdiction.
Okay.
Okay? Meaning if they pay taxes to the state.
Right.
We have jurisdiction. If they do not have taxes through, pay taxes through the state, it's BIA property, we can't remedy it.
Okay. So Seminole Housing Authority, Seminole Housing Authority doesn't pay taxes to the state? So Seminole Nation Housing Authority.
If it's, yeah, trust property, you kind of get into the, to the trust property issue.
The rodeo runs.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I have BIA property right next to my house and we just brush hogged it the other day just to get our neighbors to stop complaining about it, so...
We have zero jurisdiction on that.
And, yeah, or they'll burn it and right at four feet from my window.
Didn't we discuss one time that...
That's a good point.
That some of this money was going to be against the property taxes if these people were out of town? Wasn't, didn't that come up a year or so ago?
We, Steve directed, I guess the city directed us to look at some options. Who was it that came up with it?
The Norman.
The Norman.
Norman Ordinance.
It was referred to us and there's a more aggressive ordinance now in place that gives a lot of latitude to the city to make entry and mow and assess those property owners. And a second time, there's not even any notice that has to be given. If it gets above, gets out of compliance, on a second time, we roll in and can do that and still assess the property owner. And you're probably, the ones that I looked at today, we had some out-of-town property owners and I think probably for the first time, we may be actually invoking that from what I could tell because one in particular looked like they owned many properties and there were many citations that were, that were, yeah. And they were just an LLC company. So I imagine that we're probably going to end up having to do something and assessing that company.
Didn't we pass something like that?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's a lot.
Yes. The problem with that is we have to get a lot of cooperation from the courthouse. The treasurer and assessor have to coordinate with us to get the assessment upheld, so...
I was going to go back to my question. We don't have any procedures that we work with? Like, we don't call the Seminole Nation Housing Authority for those houses and have them to contact their owner or anything like that?
No.
No. Can we get something like that? Because like I said, the properties are checkerboarded and...
Yeah, we can. My concern with that is at this moment, now, we're working on hiring a full-time guy and that would be fairly easy then, I think.
Okay.
Right now, we're paying guys to come in and work overtime. And they're, when you start getting into things like that, I think the time that it takes to do that on a situation where we have no jurisdiction, just gets incredible. When I've got Burnett, Lieutenant Burnett's not writing 40 tickets in a day.
Right.
Instead, because he has to research one or two tribal properties, he's going to write 10 or 15.
Right.
And I mean, he comes in on a Monday morning and he'll have 30 or 40 people to call to go, or addresses to go look at.
Do you have someone you want me to call?
Well, no, in my parents' neighborhood, they try to keep their lawn down. But the two people to the south of them have issues and so they've been having snakes to come into their yard and just different things.
Are you sure they're tribal properties?
At least, they said that they've called in on them, but nothing's been done or they think nothing's been done. It may be the same thing that you've...
You want to give those addresses? I'll double-check on that.
I will do that. Yeah, I'll get it right afterwards because I'll have to get them from my parents.
Majority of the people that say they have restricted property are not restricted property. We show up on calls all the time where it's an Indian tribal residency that was built by the Seminole Nation or whichever tribe it could be. And we'll show up there on a domestic, for example, and they'll say, "Hey, get out of here. You have no jurisdiction. This is tribal property." It's not. We hear that all the time. They use that as an excuse for us not to be able to be there.
Yeah.
So a lot of times, it is, in fact...
Yeah. And see, my parents' house is a Seminole Nation Housing Authority house, but they paid it off, you know, 20 years ago.
But even the Seminole Nation...
But it's their house now, so they're subject to all of our laws now, but...
A lot of your Seminole Nation properties, for example, the one out by Martin School on 118, that's owned, the property's owned by Seminole Nation, the whole housing complex, which is 50 or so houses out there.
Right.
That's all, they pay taxes on it.
Oh, the Seminole Nation Housing Authority pays taxes on it? Okay.
It's called taxable houses.
Okay.
And that's why I'm saying, just because the Seminole Nation owns it, doesn't make it restricted.
Okay, so that's...
It has to go through the federal government to be restricted.
So then the Seminole Nation Housing Authority would be, if they, if they're still, I mean, so they, I mean...
Yeah, we could go on Seminole Nation Housing Authority tickets.
Okay.
But that's exactly, just mow their grass.
Well, let me, let me say this, though. We, the ordinance basically provides that we can cite the owner or occupant, the less, whatever. We try, we like to try to cite the occupant, you know, but that's not always feasible. A lot of these owners are property management companies and we, you can't get any compliance. A lot of them are, they turn over so much the occupants. So we have found that in some cases, it's better just to go in and cite the owners because they'll, when they get those tickets, they don't like their rent proceeds to be spent on fines. So, you know, we've kind of had a, we've kind of narrowed down some of the ones that are, that are more responsive. But I don't plan on citing the Seminole Nation, by the way, chief, but...
I'm just saying, I've watched my daddy go over there trying to mow it and fall into a hole trying to mow their lawn or something like that. He thinks that he's still a young spring chicken, but he's not quite anymore.
We just get, we do get limited when it's tribal property. We get very limited.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure I would get a hammer from the chief if I told him to start, you know...
Yeah, we haven't staffed that really about how to kick it to the Seminole Nation.
But if they do have, if the Seminole Nation does have property and/or they're, they have occupants in some of the homes. I know that, like, for instance, in, you know, Terry, you know, obviously, may not, you know, right now be able to come in and do some of this. But the, many people, the property management companies had worked with Terry in the past to get on a rotation to mow. And, you know, a lot of the property management, the local people always checked in with Terry and said, "Hey, you know, if you've got somebody, let us know immediately." And Terry was pretty good at that. If there was somebody that's, grass was tall and it belonged to one of the renters, one of the owners around here that rented, had many rental properties, I mean, they were on it immediately. So, I mean, if there's somebody at the Seminole Nation that we need to speak with, we'll get it going.
I'll look for them.
Am I filling that position now?
We had a good interview. We're very close, I think.
Okay, moving to approvals and acceptances. Bid's, number one, consideration and possible action to approve the purchase of a John Deere HX-15 brush hog from Grissom's LLC at the state contract bid price of $15,871.24 to be funded from the fiscal year 2017-18 general fund CIT.
Move to approve.
Before we bid on that, is that, or vote on it, is that a new replacement? Are you replacing one? What are you doing with the old one? I noticed on the bid sheets, the one that you got from the state, on the price, they have a trade-in value there or a trade-in place. Have we checked into that?
Yeah, I had that salesman come and look at it. He said he wouldn't, he didn't want it.
They wouldn't take it at all?
They would, probably.
Under some price?
Some price, but, you know, some of the things couldn't be used on the new one if we had to later down the road, maybe the drive shaft or something.
Where we're going to get into a backhoe, is that the same thing with it or...
Oh, yeah, we didn't even ask to have that one looked at.
Well, I would think they'd want an old backhoe because they can repair it, maybe put it back in use.
Would it be repaired? Will we repair it?
Drag it across scale.
It just took, cost two months to repair versus the actual value.
Well, they might use it for parts or something. Anyway, we'll get to that when we get to backhoe.
Motion. Is there a motion on that to approve?
I'll check.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration and possible action to approve the purchase of a Case 580N backhoe from OCT Equipment at the state contract bid price of $64,813.31 to be funded from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund with the current fund balance of $100... with a current fund balance of a hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Current business. Number three, consideration and possible action to approve amending the New Age Project Inc. site agreement to reflect a decrease in the city utilities assistance that New Age pays the city from two hundred dollars per month to one hundred dollars per month.
Do they have to pay us anything? I mean, is it, the, when I read through that, it seemed like that they were short of funds and we're trying to help out, but a hundred bucks doesn't sound like a lot. Does, does there have to be something on the books to demonstrate that they are paying for services?
I think there's something tied to the grant. Sharon, you want to?
It's tied to the grant that they apply for every year. They have to show that they're paying at least the minimum portion of the utilities.
Okay.
Well, has that grant gone down?
Yes.
So is our budget.
Yes.
A hundred dollars is not a lot, but it seems to come back to us.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration and possible action to approve the memorandum of agreement with Seminole County to provide the use of its jail and personnel for housing municipal inmates from the city of Seminole at a rate of thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents per calendar day per inmate, which is an increase from the prior year.
And I was going to ask, and at this point, they get charged that by the city, the inmates?
They're assessed.
They're assessed.
They're assessed. The book-in fees, anything that we have to do or they have to do that's a cost to us, they're assessed. And it's a two dollar and sixty-eight cent increase. It's been at thirty dollars for quite a while.
All the city inmates go over there now?
That's correct.
And if they don't pay, Jay takes lashes against the police chief for his budget indiscretion.
The whipping tree is still over there.
I've been there a few times.
It would cost us that much or more if we kept them here though.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
Much more.
Yes.
Much more. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, consideration and possible action to approve renewal of the lease agreement with M and H Property Management LLC to manage the golf course for an additional sixty months at a cost of eighty-six thousand dollars annually plus employee-only health insurance coverage for one employee.
Okay, and this sixty months, remind me again, because we can only do twelve months at a time, is it like subject to?
Uh, I don't remember how we handled that. I think.
Renewal each year?
It's a, yeah, it's an annual renewal, but I can't remember. I think we had it under the city's council last time.
Well, we have an employee, we're paying them on health insurance.
This is much cheaper.
I think we decided.
It's just a management fee, it's an.
Yeah, I think we decided that because of the annual renewal piece, that the council did have an opt-out ability.
I don't have a problem with the council voting on this and if it needs to come back under the utilities authority where we can do it, that I know we can do it, we'll bring it back. But it, it's just the entity, as far as the contracting entity, it's not going, if it's the city council and you do vote on it, you know that you're, we're not going to be able to obligate ourselves past the budget year, but we'll, we'll correct it if we need to.
Can we include that in the motion, just subject to yearly review?
I don't think you can do that.
No.
It's not on the agenda.
No, I tell you what, I would just prefer you go ahead and, you can go ahead and vote on it. I will tell you that the contract that we actually will execute is what will govern this, okay? We're not binding ourself on this, it'll be the contract and I'll prepare the contract and if we need to bring it back in front of the utilities authority, we'll vote on it.
Can they opt out after twelve months? Or is this holding them?
I don't have the contract.
Yeah, the way it's written, they can.
They can opt out whenever they want?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
I'll tell you real quick, this is the same one that we used. The only thing, I think Jay was mentioning, that we took out the green replacement that we had before, right?
Right.
That was, previously, there was a provision in there.
They could give you a ninety-day written notice, I believe.
Yeah, it's ninety days, prior to the city's fiscal budget year, which is approved July one, and they can extend for additional sixty months upon notice, at least sixty days before the termination date, so I don't have a problem with you, with you voting on it.
It says it's subject to annual approval, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anderson.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And there is an addendum to the agenda, current business, item number six, discussion and possible action regarding maintenance and structural issues with the city of Seminole's public swimming pool.
Well, I think this has been already discussed among the public. I know that we made a Facebook post that seemed to be somewhat popular for the first time that I can remember, we reached thirty thousand views on Facebook. I didn't know we had that many people interested in the swimming pool, but apparently we do. So, Chief, would you mind catching the lights on the, on the front up here? So, with, with that. With that level of interest, we decided to put together a little bit of a, of a display here so that, at, at a minimum, those that were here and with the public and the city council would be able to kind of understand what has been going on with the swimming pool, not just now, but for several years. First thing I want to show you is what happened. This is a high-level artist rendering of, of exactly what, what it is. This is the high dive, this is the swimming pool, and even though it looks comical, it is fairly descriptive about what, what happened. We, we couldn't get our friends at Enviro Systems to help us with the engineering software, so. So, we had to do it the old-fashioned way, I did it on the whiteboard. So, here's the high dive, this is the deep end and you can see up here in the shallow end, what, this is the shape of the pool. Underneath, we have the inflow for the shallow end that comes back and back into the filter. In addition, in the deep end, the big, deep grate does the same thing and recircle, recirculates that water. And there are a whole lot of pipes that we didn't try to draw in that have significance, but this is, I was just trying to demonstrate what happened, what we believe has happened. It appears that somewhere past this joint, that there was a blowout of a six-inch line, that usually carries thirty pounds of pressure, so it's, it's a high-pressure line. And when that dude blew, it, it took all this sand, the silica underneath the, the swimming pool and it put it through a, a pipe, frankly, we don't even know where this pipe goes, and it blew all that sand through this pipe and it left us with about three, three and a half feet of sand in the bottom of what used to be our basement or wet well area. So, we feel strongly that this has been undermined significantly. We knew from many years of leakage through the seams, that, that it was probably already weakened, but when this happened, it just took all of this and put it right here in the bottom of the, the wet well. So, we, we felt like it would be only responsible to close the swimming pool. We didn't want to, obviously, we couldn't even keep the chemical content up, but we, we knew that this had been undermined and that was our major safety concern, aside from being able to keep a chlorine residual. We did go out and check today, we wanted to make sure that the sand in this filter was not the sand that we were seeing down, and it is not. That sand is still in place, so that, that is effectively what has happened. In, in order to repair that, I don't even know, I don't know that there's an end to it, frankly. If we went in and we cut out the bottom of the swimming pool and found this line to repair it, I'm not sure we would know how much flowable fill or, someone even recommended we use mud from, oil company mud to, to get this under here. So, but we don't, honestly, we don't know how deep or how far this undermining has occurred. Let's go to the next slide, Sharon.
Is it thirty pounds of discharge line going back up in the shallow?
Yes.
It's a discharge?
It's, no, it's intake through to.
Seven hundred gallons a minute.
Seven, yeah, seven hundred gallons a minute, it's, it's charged.
Well, the water you've been losing could be smaller leaks in all, in all that plumbing under, under the pool.
Well, one, can I go back? Are we able to go back?
No, that's all right, go ahead.
Well, one thing I was going to point out, one of the deals we didn't point in, didn't actually draw in, is, if I color-coded this, all the piping inside of this room, the vast majority of it would be PVC, it's piping that we've been able to replace. There are pipes that are coming into that that are the old cast iron original pipes and they are so pitted and, and degraded that we are afraid to touch them and don't touch them if we can avoid it. And, and we know that that's what happened in this line, it just finally gave way. Yeah, all this in here is PVC, there's, is it right here, Mike?
Yes, what makes that turn?
Yeah. Okay, so, right here is that old cast iron line that is so pitted, it, it really does look like you've been sandblasting on it for several years, okay? We've, for several years, been fighting the water loss. Back in two thousand eight, you'll recall that we hired an engineer, we hired him to do the expansion joint, replace some of the concrete, the holes, the loose chips and, and some of the pitting that had occurred. Some of the, the light conduits were replaced and, and the underwater, underwater lights, we, we just did away with those altogether. We did special wall paint for the, the pool and it's already gone, effectively. You can see through many of the pictures that it's, it's degraded. The concrete in the deep end, we, we did, redid the cold joints and it's not tied to the current concrete. We did the inlet sumps, I think the next slide shows that we did, also did the pumps, but in two thousand eight, we were losing about twenty-eight thousand gallons a day. Obviously, that has gotten much, much, much worse. We're dealing with the chlorine loss. I, I mentioned a couple of meetings ago that, trying to deal with the gas chlorine that we're using, which we'll never be able to use that again. We're, we're just charging as much as we can charge it and it's still not holding any chemical. In two thousand seven, we had a four thousand dollar expense, in two thousand fifteen, we had a fourteen, and we just totaled it again for sixteen and that went up another two thousand twenty-five hundred dollars, so we're really in the sixteen, sixteen-five range. In two thousand seven, these are some of the upgrades that we've done to the swimming pool, not just the pool, but the area, trying to make it a more pleasant experience for our customers. The water heaters were replaced, bringing those up to code, the roof, that was a major ordeal, the leak detection, we paid the engineer and then the, the majority of the money was spent on the interior repairs to the pool, the seams. In particular, we've worked, reworked those three or four times since I've been here, trying to get some formula to be able to keep that loss of water to a minimum and so far, nothing's worked. We also did the diving board, the filtration pumps, the impeller. That impeller, we, we still haven't got it down, but we go through one of those impellers, at least one per year, sometimes more than that, and that thing's about twelve thousand dollars to, to do. We fixed a collapsed sewer line, pump repairs and the big grate repair. That's it. We'd be glad to field any questions. I know there are some conspiracy theories out there about why I don't like kids and want them to swim during the summer, but I can assure you, I've been chewed out by my own son, that he doesn't have a swimming pool to go to. So if I had my way, I would have a swimming pool for them to go to, but I'm not going to risk what, what we would be doing by putting them on a pool that has effectively no, no base underneath that concrete. If we tried to pressure it up, even if we did something different and, and tried to rework some of the, the lines, I still feel confident that the fact that it was undermined and that there's nothing supporting that concrete would be a danger that we just not, we're not willing to risk.
It's drained now totally?
Yes.
I didn't see on there, was the slide on there? Did we just put that in there four years ago?
It was on there.
Last year.
It was on there?
I didn't.
Well, it's worn out.
It is worn out.
What can you say?
That's all I can say.
I know there's some things that you're kind of looking at, starting to maybe try to put in place, just to get, gather some more information. You feel comfortable sharing any of that yet or you want?
Well, really, all we're, we're doing at this point is trying to find an engineering firm that, even if they don't specialize in aquatics, we need them to have some, some experience in aquatic programs. I know the Facebook traffic wants us to have something like Whitewater, you know, massive and huge, certainly our budget is not going to allow for something that big, but we're, we're going to do what we can, we're going to be looking at grant programs. I will say, we are very appreciative, we've already tapped the Avidus program. Avidus has been very, very kind to us and, and they helped us a lot last year. It was recommended that we get them to pay for the whole thing, I don't see that happening. Now, whether or not they'll help chip in or we can find other grants, we're going to be, we're going to be going at it, pretty hard to find some grants. Land Water Conservation Fund had, at one point, we had gotten close with them, they didn't like the fact that we were so close to the power, the power lines, so they, if, if they participate, it may be a requirement that we move the location, but at this point, I think what we're, we need to do and do fairly quickly is maybe have a, a couple of public hearings, let some of the thirty thousand people that responded on Facebook show up and give us their ideas, not just about the pool design, but location, do we want to keep it there? Some of the discussions, I had more people in my line this weekend at church than the preacher did, they, they recommend that we keep it there, three of them wanted to move the pool, but one of the major discussions that we're going to have is parking. What we have learned through the years is that building parking lots is very, very expensive. You can sink, you know, almost at least half of what you're going to do in building a swimming pool into building enough parking for the swimming pool. So, wherever we put it, we need to be cognizant of the fact that parking is expensive, so we need to, we need to probably put it somewhere near a nice parking lot. Other than that, I think the public input needs to happen and we need to be able to let them tell us more about. and we need to be able to let them tell us more about what features they want. If they just want a flat Olympic-sized pool with no, no slides or anything, we need to hear that. If they want a small pool with a slide or two, we need to be looking at that. But, right now, the, the first thing is get an engineer on board that can help us plan this, and, and even look at what are the viable locations for a structure of this size.
Well, as we know, when it comes time to that, it's time for people to throw out their wish lists. But, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what we can afford.
Right.
But, we do want to hear those things because that's important.
Yep.
How about a private donation campaign of some kind for the labor?
I'd love to have some private donations. That would be a, a really nice start to this. If we could get some seed money, or substantial chunk of this paid.
Can we go to the Communities Foundation to get that started, fund started for that?
Go to Facebook.
Some people, some people express wanting to donate on Facebook, however-
They give a dollar a piece, that's a good start.
I think we have to have a plan first, because some people, you know, want to donate to fix that one, and if that one's not, that's not feasible, I don't know that you can-
Like a high school.
Solicit money based on that. So, I think we have to have a plan.
Yeah, sort of like a high school.
Just like the high school.
It was a, it was a hot topic.
It really was. We were, we were shocked to see that kind of response. But, that's, I think it's good. At least people are concerned about their community, and want it to be nice, and look better, and be better. So, we want to do what we can to support that. But, a swimming pool is an amenity that is, is a requirement for a community like ours. We expect the best, and expect to have first-rate quality of life, and that's something that we need.
If you don't have Facebook, and would like to see some of the comments, you're gonna have to join Facebook, but there are like a hundred and fifty-eight comments. It was shared over like two-hundred-and-fifty times. It is, yeah, you can see what, you can see what people are saying.
Yeah.
But, I think, yeah, it's about as diverse-
Is there any way to bleep some of those things that they say about me?
Well, some, some of the bad language was bleeped.
Okay.
People using-
It is, yeah.
You know, my, my cousins that were from Michigan would come down during the summer, and there were several of them that commented that, you know, how sad, and the memories, and, you know, we want our kids to have those memories too, and that's, you know, why it's important. I think we'll have a lot of, a lot of people get behind this.
Donations, you talking about?
I hope so.
I think one of the comments was that Steve went down and broke it himself, wasn't it?
Yeah, well-
You do have more time. You start talking about a new pool last month.
He can't hold spread that long.
That's true. I couldn't dive that deep if I had to.
Steve, I hate to say this, but that pool is quite a bit older than you are.
Yes, no doubt. You know, for the record, Brad made a good point just now, that it's really not like the high school, in that, the reason that we showed you that slideshow is, we've done the maintenance. We did a lot of repairs through the years-
Yeah, it's just worn out.
-trying to keep it to, to an operation level, and it just finally, just wore out.
It's just worn out. I don't know how you start these things, to get public opinion, to come together and, and make decisions about what the community really wants, but you guys know about that, and know how to do that, unless I'm in favor of initiating-
We're gonna get an engineer on board that can help-
That's where the engineer would come in.
Yeah, he'll, he'll help talk us through what, what's too expensive, what, what is feasible, what, you know, what is your price range, is probably where he's gonna start. So, that, we probably need to kick off that private fundraising campaign fairly soon.
They are similar, and both of them are really old, and both of them have foundational issues.
Do you have any idea, Steve, what a new pool would cost, roughly?
No, sir. There, that's, that's kind of like saying, how much does a house cost? It just depends. I mean, if you want eleven hundred square feet, or if you want six thousand square feet, do you want marble countertops? I mean, that's, the swimming pool, it can cost, you know, anywhere from twelve thousand dollars to four-point-six million.
Well, if had an engineer to give a report, then, to say that this one can not be repaired, then we have no choice but to go another way, and he's gonna tell us that.
I don't think you need to tell us that.
I was gonna say, man, if you want to spend the, the three or four grand to have an engineer come tell us that it's worn out, I guess we can do that.
I'll do it for an hundred dollars. Kind of like looking at a dead mill, this.
Go jump down on it and see if you fall through.
You know, in, in the two thousand seven, was it two thousand seven or two thousand eight report, they, they, they pretty much told us that this is our last go. You're, you're in need of, of replacement now, so start planning. And, we've just, we've had other priorities. So, now is the time. We've got to get it moving.
Yeah. I just, I was telling somebody that earlier. I said, what, you know, Steve would, uh, talk about a new pool last month, and then it would go out-
Yeah, yeah.
For the next month.
Yeah, that's-
You just-
Great timing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, uh-
Somebody come over to your house and swim now, Chris.
Come swim in my lake. We do have a swimming area at the sportsman's-
Yes, we do, though.
Yeah. Okay, that brings us to reports, then. The mayor not being here, there'll be no mayor or ality report. City manager, have anything else to- Yes, I've got a lot. I got a laundry list here. The first thing I need to do is to tell J.P. Grant, happy anniversary. She's married to one of the more difficult men that I know, who chose to spend his anniversary here with us tonight, because he's got a lot on the agenda.
I choose.
All right, I told him he had to be here. But, Mike, man, I, he's, he's an absolute hero for the city, and that we couldn't possibly do the things. The project that is, is almost complete, we've got a little bit more work to do under, by the Larry Snowcone stand. That's a, that's a big deal for our community. I, I can't wait to see how it functions in our next heavy, heavy rain. But, we cleared out the, the underpass there by Larry Snowcone Stand, and we ended up, I think, with a hundred and seventy truckloads so far-
Of dirt?
Of dirt.
Where did all go?
One hundred and seventy truckloads of dirt came out from under that bridge. So, it's, it's really no wonder that the, the water was backing up. We, at one point, had thought that it was a state highway. It may be state, a state problem, and that they would do the cleanup. They informed us pretty quick that, no, you guys have to do the mowing and the cleaning of the, of the underpass. So, the culverts are now passable. They're clean. We're gonna do a little bit more work on the bank of the west side to, to expose the wing walls, and hopefully get this thing flowing much, much better. For quite a while, it's been brought up here, and, and so many times that we kind of got a little bit bored with the discussion of having a bypass. Unfortunately, that led to a fatality accident this last month, and it's a bad deal. We've had a lot of staff discussion about it. It, it was clearly just a personal error. I mean, it was just human error that caused the accident. I don't think, this is another Facebook thing, that, you know, we've had hundreds and hundreds of, of ideas thrown at us through phone calls and other means, and Facebook, about what we need to do at that intersection to make it safer, whether it's rumble strips, better signage, flashing signage. You know, I, I just don't think there's ever going to be a point where you can eliminate human error. It's going to happen. With that being said, we are checking with, with ODOT on perhaps delaying the signal between green on one side and red on the other, just, just a, maybe a beat or two, to try to get, get an extra second for people to acknowledge that the, that the intersection is clear. Outside of that, I, I don't know that there's a lot that we can do short of a bypass, and we need, you know, it's gonna take a lot of money and a lot of legislative effort to get that kind of money allocated. I can tell you that, that during our staff discussion, we've been assured by our police chief, and his, his troops are committed to giving a no-tolerance policy from here on out. You know, there, there's an element there of compassion for these truck drivers. If they get, if they get caught running a red light, there's a strong likelihood that they're gonna lose their livelihood. And, to this point, we had compassion, a lot of it. But, when they start taking mothers out of our community, and leaving babies without a mom, then it becomes an issue that we can't have compassion for, and we're going to enforce it with zero tolerance, and we're gonna get the trucks under control. And, I feel privileged to have your input, but if you have any other suggestions, you want me to follow through with other ideas, I'll be glad to run that as far as we can.
I would, on that, I would really like to see us lower that speed limit going into that, into that, that light. I don't know what it would need to be lowered to, but, you know, the fact that there, you know, it's forty-five and fifty coming through there the other way, you know, with the stoplight, you don't have time to stop on a yellow sometimes, and especially if you're a eighteen-wheeler.
Right.
That, if we could somehow step down that speed limit coming into that, to say, you know, maybe thirty miles an hour or something, to where they're forced to have time to stop, or, or a lot better chance of stopping. You know, I, I don't know what it takes to do that. It seems like they told us we could do whatever we want to at one point. Maybe we lowered that to forty or forty-five over by Walmart, but I just-
Yeah, we can, we can request that. You guys just tell me what you want to have requested, and we can request that at ODOT, and see what we can come up with. Give that some thought, and just, just give me a call. Be glad to.
Steve, before you, I, I'm gonna throw this out, that we had some conversation on it before when we were working with cameras, but, you know, and it's not just the trucks, it's cars. I mean, I don't know how many times you pull up there, and it's just cars running the red lights. And, I'm sorry, but our officers, they have other things that they need to go take care of, unfortunately, because there's families that have problems, and things that they have to be there. They shouldn't have to sit there at the lights and watch. I mean, it's, they shouldn't. I, I really think we should review, looking at putting cameras up, and finding those that run red lights, and make sure we have good signage there that says, you know, if you run this light, you will be fined. I don't know how sure you're gonna do it, because you can't have an officer sitting there all the time. You know, our community may not like it, but they surely don't like someone dying. Now, car accidents, you may not die from it. I mean, you're less likely to than an eighteen-wheeler running it, but I think we have to do something stronger than that even, because, you know, if they know they're gonna get fined automatically, then I think you'll pay a little more attention and not run that red light. So, I, I'm just throwing that out as a thought and an idea, because, you know, I think just, we just need to do something stronger.
Well, it seems, it doesn't seem like, I mean, I agree with that thing too, but it just doesn't seem like we have that problem at the other red lights, or near as bad a problem. I mean-
Strather's and Bill Phillips is probably our worst.
Is another one?
You agree with that?
Yeah, Strather's and Bill Phillips, we have more race there than we do at now.
You do? Why, why do you think causes that?
I would say that, that we probably have as many as Broadway and Bill Phillips also.
Yeah.
Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, it's like Mr. Saxon was saying, human error. If, if these people get in a hurry, they're gonna run the light. I, I hate to be negative here, and I may, you know, I just hate to, but I, I even think that delaying the light by a half a second or a second is a hopeful, I mean, it may stop a few, but it's, people are still gonna run the red lights. We're writing tickets, we're, I mean, we're working that intersection of that, by Brahms. We're working the intersections. I got a text from Brad today, that he was doing forty-five miles an hour, a forty-five mile an hour section, two semis, what is right by it. We're writing those tickets. People speed.
It, it's a choice. I mean, that's a choice that the people are making.
That's exactly.
And we need to change your choice. If it hits the pocketbooks, then I think they will change your choice.
What's the fine for speeding?
It just varies depending on the, how, how much you're, you're going over. I, I will make a point on that the cameras, and you correct me if I'm wrong, because you guys know more about it than I do. I know, from personal experience, how that works in Dallas, in Plano. You speed, you run a red light, and the camera catches you. And, you get a ticket in the mail, and it doesn't matter where you live, or what state you live in, you're gonna get a ticket. And, it's a civil ticket. It's, it's, it's not a criminal, it's a civil ticket, and that's how they, that's how they do that. And, but unfortunately, it takes an officer dedicated to sit at the police department and review that film, that footage, every day. It's like twenty-four hours a day, you're gonna have somebody doing it.
I also don't, I don't know this. I'm not sure it's legal in Oklahoma for the-
We'll check into it.
Yeah, we can.
We'll, we'll, first of all, we'll need to get the cost estimates for you, and we'll, we'll run it to ground.
I just think we have to do something to make people change their choice.
Agreed.
Because it is a choice. There are accidents where people aren't paying attention, but when the light turns red and you choose to go through it, that is a choice.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I agree that it's a choice. I don't think that we'll be able to punish our way into improvement, though. I think generally, I think the impact force has to do with speed, and reducing the speed limits may be helpful at that one, and the one on Broadway. The one on Bill Phillips and, and Strather, basically, it's a timing thing, and the vision is poor. You can't see what's coming up over the hill, and so, I'm just saying that we should look at other types of intervention besides punishment, because I just don't think we're gonna be able to punish our way into improving behavior.
Well, just this morning at nine-thirty, going down to Bill Phillips, I was coming to Evans when the light changed, and a semi was on the outside passing me. He did not stop. He run a red light, but the next red light called him. He said, we had to stop at that one, because it just switched. So, it's just a matter of the driver. They're doing it.
Yeah, we, we've got to become known as a place with zero tolerance. I mean, it's gonna take five or six tickets, and then the trucking world, I feel strongly, is gonna realize that you don't blow through Seminole.
Are the folks that come through, the truck owners, are the same companies that typically come through Seminole?
Uh, I'm not sure it is, you know.
Go, go right here.
I'm not sure it is, in the sense that, you know, we, I think we forget, because I forgot until stuff like this started happening, that we're on a state highway.
Yeah.
We're on a major thoroughfare coming from Texas. I've started doing some traffic stops a little more than I was, and I'm getting a lot of people from Texas that I'm stopping, a lot of people from Missouri, a lot of out-of-state people that, that are coming through. Part of what we've talked about, right now, I've got Lieutenant Burnett, he's working code enforcement a lot. As soon as he's done working code enforcement, instead of spending that day working code enforcement, he's gonna spend that day working commercial traffic. We're sending him to schools, the fact that, I hate to say it's good timing, because it's terrible, there's no good timing here. What happened with, with the sellers was a tragic, avoidable event. But, that Monday, Lieutenant Burnett had just gone through fatality accident investigation school. We're sending him, I'm looking at schools, I'm talking to OHP, we're sending him to a lot of different schools for commercial motor vehicles, because it's a whole different ballgame. You know, I'm learning, me coming from the sheriff's office, not really working traffic. After that accident, talking to the troopers that work these commercial- working traffic. After that accident, talking to the troopers that work these commercial crashes, the laws are all different. And, you know, we're going to get familiar with those laws. We're going to make sure we know, Officer Lieutenant Burnett's going to start working traffic on overtime shifts to help get our reputation, like, like Steve said he wants. He wants us to have the reputation of, if you're on a semi, you speed through Seminole, you're going to get a ticket.
I was just hopeful that there would be enough local ownership that we could talk to some people, you know, that have trucking services.
I don't think so. I hate to say that. I hate to be...
Well, you make a good point about it being a thoroughfare from Tulsa to...
Yeah, you've got a lot of industry in...
Five, Texas.
Ada.
My wife lives at Darlington Tater, which is solo cup in Ada. And if you ever sit in their parking lot, and you watch the semis coming in, there'll be 50 to 100 semis a day. Well, all those semis are coming from one direction or the other every day. And it's just, and that's just that one plant. And you have the plant that makes bumpers up there, I forget what, Flexing Gate. I mean, there's, we're a major thoroughfare. And a shortcut for a lot of people coming from Denton and stuff to get to I-40.
The local people will get the news real quick if they start, you know, stopping the commercial traffic.
You know, and with what you're saying, Tim, with the local people, they're already getting the news. We're, we've been so aggressive with writing traffic tickets, that I hear all the time, man, you don't want to speed through Seminole. You want to speed local, you don't want to speed through Seminole. You're coming like that all the time. So the local people get that. We have to, like, like Steve instructed me, we have to get it out to the trucking companies where they're getting on their CVs and saying, hey, you're coming into Seminole, slow your run down. Don't run that light, because they're bad. They'll get you.
Any other things?
No, sir. I'm good.
City attorney?
Mow your lawn, don't speed.
Well, I bring this to council members, and I suppose I'd just simply say, thank you for making my speech for me. Larry?
Well, I saw a photograph in the newspaper a while back, so I know where our city attorney gets his good looks.
My mother wasn't in the paper, or she was?
Your father, he looked just like you. And I've talked to about our, you know, Mike Grant, I've talked to some of the folks who work for the city. They say he's the best boss ever. But they've never worked for me. But we appreciate the good work that you do for us. And other than that, I just hope that we can come up with a good solution for our swimming pool, and our school is coming up. I'd like to remind the public that there's been a lot of hard work put in on the school project, and it's time that we pass some support for that. Thank y'all very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Word two, Stephanie Lambert.
Well, once again, thank you, guys. Thank you for being so prompt when there are complaints that we have, that we make to the city. You guys are great. You know, even though we have some, had some mishaps over the last month, you guys are still great. And same thing, mow your lawn, stop at stop signs. And that's, those are the two things that I get the most complaints about, and the fireworks lately. Those, you know, those are the things that I hear about the most. But other than that, it's, it's a good town to live in.
Word three, Jeff.
Uh, yeah, you know, I was ready to say, I'm going to act like no one else said this, so this time, nobody did. So I was fortunate enough to go out and, and visit with several of our, our street crew and water department during some of the projects they've been working on. And, you know, hot, you know, it's been miserable weather, but they're out there working every day from bridge replacement to digging out the creek, to working on sewer breakages, to, to everything. And I just want to name a few of the guys, and hopefully I don't miss, you know, people, but you always have that danger when you start naming names. But Bill, and Dakota, and Darren, and Raymond, Rodney, Kevin, Stretch, Donnie, Pete, from out at Sportsman, you know, they were out there working, putting in additional buoys to mark where the floats are, so you can swim out there. One day, they had a big crane out there working on that. And then really, the water department, I mean, those guys are very responsive. If you have a problem, they're out there helping, doesn't matter what time of day. At Enviro, we had a problem on July the 3rd at about 9:30. Somebody was out there within about 15 minutes. And, I mean, so I want to give a thank you to them as well.
Thank you. Tim Poplin?
Mow your grass and slow down.
Word four, Chris. DeeDee?
Bypass, I know what you're going to say.
Bypass, no. Very productive, DeeDee. I love it. But we're, you all understand why I've been saying bypass all day. But I have a question for Steve, and also, I guess for you, Brad, on our charter changes that were recommended by the charter committee. Is that coming up on the vote in September?
Good question. Should be.
November.
November. We're going to the general election to, I think what we were trying to do is get it, we have a general election, it saves us on costs, is that correct?
Right.
And we can put it on the next one. Hopefully, we can, now, the primary, I guess I'm trying to think of the next election that we're going to have. I guess that would be...
September.
September. But is that a, I can't remember if that's a...
It's a special.
It's a special. So we'll probably...
I think this will be our fourth vote that we've had since we did that, yet it's never come up.
I know. It's, it's ready. We've got our, we've got our resolutions, all of that. I think it's already the, I may be wrong, but I believe David Cobb at the, at the election board has those, so...
But it's too late to get into September?
I didn't even checked on it. I thought we were going to do that in November. Nope, the answer's November.
Enough said. Thank you.
There will be no further business. A motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed and stay.